along the way through the town by coding, dash robots, and completing multiplication tasks at each staff. The activities showcase students' problem-solving, coding, and math skills, and it was great work by the fourth graders. The kindergarten classes will be working with Laura Hipper, the instructional technology specialist, at a lesson in January called Keyboard Phonics through a phonics game. It has been awesome seeing the various grade levels engaging in these lessons. A special thanks to the Lincoln Street PTO and families for treating staff to a wonderfully delicious cookie event. Each staff member headed off for the holidays with a variety box of homemade treats. Lincoln Street gathered as a school community for a holiday sing-along. It was a festive way to kick off the winter break, and they're looking forward to a healthy start to 2023. At Proctor, the third graders brought good cheer and well wishes to the Northborough Senior Center. On December 20th, the third graders, under the direction of general music teacher Ms. Burns, cajole for the Northborough seniors. The Proctor fourth graders and Ms. Dowd's class have been hard at work during their enrichment period preparing for the play Bebop with Aesop. The fourth graders will present to the school and families on January 19th. On January 19th, the Worcester County DA's office will visit Proctor and present to the fourth and fifth graders on bullying, cyberbullying, and how to safely navigate online apps, games, and platforms. We look forward to this informative presentation and applying what we learned to make safe and responsible choices. The four elementary schools are looking forward to band and chorus concerts at the end of January. Our young musicians have been hard at work, prepared to showcase all that they have accomplished and learned since the start of the school year. The students have spent months learning the material and are eager to share their efforts with families. The Proctor School will end the month of January with a winter concert on the 25th. The band and chorus students have been preparing for months and are eager to share their talents with the school and families. At Peaslee, we welcomed fourth grade families to the annual Cookies and Cocoa on the evening of December 21st. Fourth graders shared their singing talents, artwork, and poetry during this wonderful family event. Second graders shared their heritage projects on November 28th. This is a wonderful experience to research and share the annual traditions and holidays among our families. All students and teachers worked hard preparing for these special community events. Peaslee students enjoyed celebrating Peaslee's 60th anniversary with a Peace, Love, and Spirit Day on December 23rd. Students and staff spent time sharing the meaning of living in peace and harmony while spreading kindness and respect to one another. Every Spirit Day throughout the year is paired with a food drive supporting the Northborough Food Bank. Students and their families were very gracious this month. The next Spirit Day is Crazy Hair Day on January 27th. First graders at Peaslee will participate in the Sound Enrichment Program through the Discovery Museum on Friday, January 6th. Third grade will participate in the Forest and Magnetism Enrichment on January 24th. These programs are a highlight for students and teachers. Peaslee would like to thank the PTO for supporting and organizing these wonderful experiences. Peaslee looks forward to our PTO-sponsored Winter Fest on Friday, January 20th. The fun winter-themed social will include games, inflatables, arts, and crafts, both indoors and outdoors, for students and their families. We'll also be sponsoring a Look What Peaslee Can Do together with a non-perishable food collection, which will happen during the event. At Z, we held our December community meeting on the 9th. We read the book, The Sandwich Swap, and talked about how to create a lunchroom that is inclusive for all of our students with the help of our mascot, Stripes the Zebra. We also celebrated some of our students and staff that went above and beyond. During the month of December, we collected personal hygiene supplies as well as baby blankets, bottles, mittens, and hats in a drive to support the Family Health Center of Worcester. The items collected will help support local families in need during the winter months. The week before break was filled with fun. We had a spirit week, which included crazy socks, Z-spirit, and my favorite, pajama day. On the 20th, the PTO provided breakfast for the staff, which was delicious. And on the 23rd, we held an all-school sing-along, which was a great way to close out 2022. Starting next week, our English language learners will be taking their state access tests, which will assess their English language acquisition skills. I want to thank our ELD teachers for their work to prepare and create schedules for this to go smoothly. And also next week, our classroom teachers will begin administering mid-year assessments, and we will use that data to check our progress, update small groups, and help us map our instruction for the second half of the year. At Melican, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders auditioned for the upcoming musical Matilda Jr. before vacation. Including the stage crew, they have 85 students participating in the production. Rehearsals take place from now until mid-March with performances scheduled for March 17th and 18th at 7:00 PM at Algonquin. The boys and girls basketball teams have had a successful start to their seasons. The girls team went into break with a 2-0 record, and the boys had a 3-0 record. But both teams suffered their first losses yesterday. And the students have been very supportive and positive. The winter concert series was a success with three concerts before vacation. Each concert was well-attended, and the students were excited to share what they had learned. Melican raised over $1,200 through the Holiday Helper Initiative, and this money was donated to Northborough Helping Hands to support folks during the holiday season. We want to thank the PTO for the wonderful faculty and staff breakfast in December. And the English language learners will engage in access testing this month. And the teachers have worked hard to prepare and support the students. That's it.
Great.
Questions?
Any questions?
I guess I'll just comment. It's really great to hear all the community involvement that our young students have, just connecting them with the nursing homes and things like that. So thanks for sharing that tonight.
Anyone?
I'd just like to take back to all the other principals, all the wonderful things that they did, especially at the beginning when you talk about all the different celebrations, because we're all multicultural, and the children need to learn about so much about that. Like you said, it's always the light, because it's the darkest day that we have in December. But it's wonderful to see also the collaboration with PTO helping out and thanking the teachers for everything that they did. And you did a great job on your first one, and many more to come. Give you a gold star.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you are welcome to stay or leave for the evening.
Thank you.
Legislative update.
So just a brief update on the out-of-district tuition costs, the 14% increase that OSD set as a targeted increase for a fiscal year going forward. So we have learned that most likely that will move to advocacy, the legislative delegation, and potentially be impacted by circuit breaker. So the 14% is fixed, is from what we've learned. And the way we can try to mitigate that 14% increase is by advocating for increased circuit breaker money. So advocacy is just shifting.
So we would advocate-
Increase circuit breaker reimbursement.
To increase the circuit breaker reimbursement. And would that be then forever or for the year? How is that, do you know how they're-
I'm not sure how that would be structured. I would imagine that the 14% is a one-time increase. So I would imagine that it would probably be a one-time increase in circuit breaker to accommodate.
To advocate to our legislators, they will- letters and give them to our new governor as of 12/9/2022?
I was gonna say, I'm sure, is there one-
We did send a letter.
Previous.
Previous. But I think that it's probably wise to resend it, and I'll update the letter, and we can co-sign it again.
Thank you.
And that is the legislative update.
Approval of grants and donations. So we had a donation for a buddy bench for the playground at the Fannie E. Proctor School. And the donation came for the amount of $1,200, and it was from the Junior Women's Club and Private Citizens. So I don't know if you have any more background about it? Was it requested?
No, I think it was a conversation. I think it was generated actually from a group of students at recess and working with Principal Seer and the students. They found the funding for a bench.
And you probably don't know if it's one or two, because I know they have an upper wing and a lower wing. I'm just curious if it's-
I think it was-
I believe it's one bench.
One bench.
It's one bench, so maybe it's probably for the upper wing. I feel like there's benches around. Well, that is amazing. Thank you so much, the Northborough Junior Women's Club and Private Citizens for that donation. I will accept a motion to accept the donation? Yes, Joan?
I move that we accept with great gratitude the donation from the Junior Women's Club and the Private Citizens in the amount of $1,200 for the buddy bench for the playground at the Fannie E. Proctor School.
Motion by Joan, seconded by Erin. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you so much.
And we will send out a lot of appreciation for the donation.
Great, thank you. Presentation cycle. We've talked about the different cycle for the teaching and learning teams, and then also the PTOs?
Correct. Yep. So in your packet is a draft cycle similar to a regional school district, where we have a rotation of content areas and departments presenting over a two-year cycle. This mirrors that presentation cycle. I like having a structure, because we can then communicate to our directors and our folks and have them be prepared to present.
I like it for the PTOs as well, coming from both sides of it, for us to know, but also being on the PTO to know. I know in previous years, it's like, oh, next month. You gotta put your stuff together. I'm sure they will appreciate that, too. Yeah, it looks good to me. I don't know, does anybody have any? Joan?
How is this communicated to the team leaders or to department heads?
So the teaching and learning team primarily is responsible for many of these presentations. So I think through Dr. Reinhorn, it will be communicated to those folks.
Okay. I think it's a great idea, because I think what was lacking for years, I've been asking for these same type of presentations, because I think they're very helpful. As we do our budget cycles and everything with discussions, we've always did it at the regional, so why don't we do it here? And I think it's great, and I think it's even good for the teaching staff, so that they see it and the directors or anybody who wants to, or even the public or the principals, to see what's gonna be happening. And it's nice to have an overview of that and also to have the PTOs on the schedule, too. Thank you.
And I just would comment that this is flexible, too. So if there is a need for a presentation or we need to adjust the schedule, it's the will of the committee to do it.
So it's looking like, just to give a heads-up for anyone listening, that the Proctor and Peaslee PTOs will be in March. And Z will be in April, and then May will be Melican and Lincoln. Just for those PTOs.
And we'll send out-
And we'll send out-
A reminder to the principals and the PTOs.
And then for the PTOs also, Erin and I have been working on coming up with kind of a guidelines request for them, so they'll give us specific things that we'd like to hear about. All right. Thank you so much. Moving on, next is the NEDP discussion.
So Northborough Extended Day Program has been a longstanding, privately-run program that we have issued licensing agreements to over the years. We are in conversations around whether it makes sense for the district to take on running the Extended Day Program. At this point in time, our goal was to complete and conduct a study this year, 2022, 2023. But we really have not had the chance to conduct that study. And therefore, what our recommendation is at this point is to issue a one-year licensing agreement to NEDP. So that would allow us time to conduct the study in '23, '24, and make a recommendation to the school committee. Our goal would be in late fall of '23 to make a recommendation to the committee. That way, we would have time, if it is the will of the committee and advantageous to the district to take on the program, that we would have time to transition January leading up to the start of the program.
I know that Southborough made that transition, and they did a study before. And we were sort of waiting to see how Southborough KDA was proceeding. How is that proceeding? And are we gonna be looking at their results and see what they modeled?
Yeah, I think that it's gone well. But it has been a transition, and it has been additional work for the Southborough District and our central office team. We are glad that we made the transition for a variety of reasons. But again, it's a significant endeavor, not one taken lightly. Based on our initial experience, we want to get through a full year to make a final assessment. But at this point in time, we're happy with the decision. And that's why we're actually hoping to do a study in Northborough, see if it's advantageous to take it on in Northborough as well.
Would you see that we would have to add on any staff to the financial to take care of?
We would. So the goal would be similar to the goal in Southborough, it would be a self-funding program. So all costs would be through tuitions, including healthcare. So there would be no additional-
Kind of like cafeteria, like its own-
It'd be a-
All-in-account program.
Correct. A self-sustaining program. But we would have to bring on staff to be able to run a program. Similar in Southborough, our thinking is that we have very talented NEDP staff. And if it was our decision to move in a different direction, we would try to partner with current staff members and bring them on board. And that's what we did in Southborough, and we've had great success with that.
And not to put you on the spot, but how many students do we have that participate in math program?
Yeah, in Southborough. I don't know the last count.
Yeah.
How about here in Northborough? Do we know?
A lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I-
It's all this phone.
Yeah.
I don't have that data. I think it's a great-
I'm on the spot for the numbers. I was just wondering what it was.
Weekend, that's a great question. We can get that dated.
Like, you're saying there's a lot?
There is a waiting list.
Yeah, I mean, I look into the cafeteria, the thing, I gotta say, at least 50, I would think.
Just at-
At one school.
Yeah, just at-
You know what I mean? At one school, I would think it's like 30 or 50 people.
I think that is a waiting list. I think that it is well-attended, and I think many of our families appreciate having that type of program available today.
And every school, well, that's the other thing to do is- I don't think all of our schools do after and after school.
Correct.
So that would be something also to potentially look into and seeing if there's a need to-
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the challenges that we hear from many families is if they move into a neighborhood and the school does not have a before-and-after-school program, it's a real challenge. So I think that is something we would look at. Is there a way we can either transport or offer the same level of program at all four of those schools? I think it also ties back to the conversation around kind of district structure and neighborhood schools versus-
Reconfiguration.
Reconfiguration.
Can I ask, why is it not at all schools? Is it enrollment?
It's enrollment and staffing and our ability to staff. Primarily enrollment.
So my question was, if we ended up having an in-house program, it would be self-sustaining. Right now, what are the budgetary implications for running it through Northborough Rec?
Nothing. Currently, through the licensing agreement, they rent space.
Okay.
So we receive rental from them, and we would continue that next year. So it's actually an income for us, and that would continue next year. And then, again, part of the analysis we would do is to see what the financial implications are.
Okay. So all other fees go directly towards them? They run-
Correct.
Enrollment and things like that? Okay.
Okay. Moving on, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we are going to postpone the American English learners' data presentation until February. More org business? Would you have kind of a question about that on the agenda? What is org business, and why do you even ever have org business? I probably can't talk about it, but then we talk about it again.
Yeah, so-
I'm missing one there.
Is this a comedy bit? So if there's a, I think if there's new business and then we want to talk about it again, it becomes org business.
Okay. But I feel like when I was just put it back into the no business, like, I feel like every-
We could change that practice. You're the chair.
Yeah. I feel like maybe it's just business. Talk about NEDP again.
That's gonna go a little bit to the old business there. All right. So moving on to the superintendent's report, enrollments.
So in your packet is the enrollment report as of the 16th of December. And we had two more students enroll in our district. And I will share that we've had a number of students enroll over the past week and a half. So enrollment is slowly creeping up. It's something that we're watching very closely for the fiscal year '24 budget. We were hoping that this, our projections at this time when we created the class size policy was that there was a thought that we'd see declining enrollment, and we'd be able to move students back to their neighborhood schools and not the district students. But we're finding that the opposite is true, or actually having to redistrict more students as a result of increased enrollments.
Greg, would you say the new move-ins that we've had, like in October, we had 10, and it's been decreasing, but we still have new enrollments? When those people move into the district, is that, are some of those students being redistricted, or are some of them able to take place in their area school?
I mean, it really depends. I think the challenge we typically face is when there are siblings. So most families that move in have more than one child. And we find that there might be a school where one grade level is capped and the other isn't. But we have to redistrict because there is a school where the grade levels aren't capped at both grade levels. But I'd say more often than not, we're redistricting kids at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know that we usually track close to the NOSDAP projections and things like that, but it just makes me nervous seeing that these grades are capped. So if they're capped now, most likely, they're gonna be just rolling over to the following, where those grades are gonna be capped, you know? And then, how are we going to be with, I mean, looking at the fifth grades, there's only one fifth grade with three teachers. So do you know what I mean? So that's only one, do you know what I mean? Like, are we gonna, I fear that we're gonna have staffing issues.
So one of the things we've not done is we've not moved forward staffing. So with our three sections, maybe potentially in a grade level, we haven't moved that three sections to the next grade level. So we do have a separate sheet for the FY '24 where we have those scenarios. And I think that the question we ask is, do we have space if kids move in, even if we have to redistrict in a particular grade level across our district? And the answer currently is yes, but it's becoming tight.
Tighter. I mean, I'm looking at even just not the redistrict, just in one school, like alone, having, you know, full, like looking at the kindergarten, first grade at Z, for example, and the second grade, second all those.
Yeah, like Z is an example. Z is capped in grade one, grade two.
Kindergarten? But it would be moving, yeah, so we can be for next year, it would be like basically, one, two, three, four, it's gonna be-
Three and five.
Yeah. Just keep in mind-
Part of the conversation around grade level configuration, school configuration.
Yeah.
You know, how do we maximize our resources? And how do we provide the best experience for students in a grade configuration that works well for the community?
Is the committee still meeting?
We just got it on the email today about that.
Yeah, so we're convening in January, reconvening. And the group identified next level work, so we're gonna move forward with that work. The other part of that story, too, is the MSBA did open up the window for core building submissions January 13th. So we will be submitting a statement of interest for Peaslee, which I think will enter into the conversation around what does Peaslee become? So also, in your packet is the FY '23 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report. And Becky will share that story.
So the finance team does continue to monitor the Northborough operational budget. As you know, it is frozen at this point in time. I have been working with directors and also with principals to make sure that any of their needs are met, though. So no fear that people are not being able to purchase the things that they need in order to operate throughout the school year. As a result of the work, though, that we've been doing, you will notice that the Monthly General Fund Report does have $307,310 on the bottom line, which is just over $90,000 more than what we had last month. We're also trending very closely to where we were in the previous two fiscal years. So in FY '22, we did have $369,000, and in FY '21, we had $327,000. So I do feel like we are at a good place right now. I am able to sleep at night, which is always a good sign. And everybody has been wonderful in terms of being accommodating and being very thoughtful about the purchases that they are making.
Is there anything that we're incumbent in the schools as far as materials due to the supply chain? Paper, toner, anything like that?
Paper continues to be, I don't know, a wild card, I guess we could say. This fall, though, we did work with the schools to make sure that they were purchasing what they anticipated they needed for the rest of the school year. And so all of the schools have done that. But it's amazing, a pallet of paper that we purchased at the beginning of December, we went on today, and it's $1,000 more for the pallet. So it's just, you know, you really have to shop around and can't rely on one product, because it's ever-changing. So you just, paper continues to be like the, I guess, the thorn in my side. In terms of other supplies, though, we are able to, we have not seen any issues. The copier situation has settled down. We moved to Xerox, and so we have been able to get the toner that we weren't able to get last year through Conica. So I would say paper is the main thing.
Seems like every year, it's the paper.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? It doesn't matter what school district you're in. It always seems that it's something about the paper, you know? It can come to short supply. In education today, that's what you rely upon with all the good learning styles that we have, so.
Yeah. I guess during the pandemic, many of the factories closed down and moved to corrugated paper or cardboard, because people weren't purchasing paper. They were all working remotely, and everything was being done electronically. And so that's really cut the number of plants that are available to make paper. So it's continued two years later to be an issue.
Thank you for that, Jen.
So just add one comment, and that is that principals have done a nice job monitoring paper usage and looking at, making sure that they have enough paper when June arrives, May and June. In the past, it really was an issue. If we needed paper in May, we would order paper. But we don't have that luxury right now. A, because if we ordered it, it wouldn't arrive on time. And B, the cost is really prohibitive. So they've done a nice job of kind of allocating the resources that they need for this school year. And teachers have done a really nice job trying to conserve when possible. But if you hear that there's no paper and that we can't afford paper, it's partially true because it's so expensive, that we do have enough paper to last through the school year. And if not, we'll order corrugated.
Yeah. We'll start breaking boxes off.
Ask them to bring away the paper.
Yeah, oh boy.
Can I have a motion to appeal to audit it?
Jen?
I'm going to accept and until audited the Northboro Public School FY 2023 budget, the monthly general fund expenditure report as of December 31st, 2022.
Motion by Jen, seconded by Erin. Any discussion? No, thank you.
So next in your packet is the capital projects and improvements, approved FY24 capital plan. And I'll just highlight that this Saturday at 8:30, we'll be convening at Z School for a building tour from 8:30 to 9:30. And then we'll be traveling to Peaslee for a building tour. And then for those who are interested, we will be looking at the athletic complex at Algonquin as the last stop on the building tour. That is this Saturday. Also, we are having conversations with town administrator Kandar around the Proctor Roof. I don't think that the select board has made any decisions around the use of ARPA funds, but they do know that the Proctor Roof is a top priority in terms of funding that project using ARPA funds.
Have they gone more forward with anything else, like bidding? Are we still waiting?
No, we're still waiting to hear from the select board that that's something they'll fund through ARPA.
To be.
Probably should.
Should probably follow up.
Get on the edge of that.
Make sure that, since it's not like we're waiting for MSBA, you know what I mean? But we're not under a timeframe anymore, so we can get that done.
So I'll follow up tomorrow. Also in your packet are the FY24 budget goals and FY24 budget calendar. And next is the FY24 revised preliminary budget presentation. So just give me one minute to set up. So at the December meeting, as you all know, we presented the FY24 preliminary budget. And typically in January, we would be presenting the superintendent's recommended budget. But this year, due to a variety of factors, we are about a month behind schedule, mostly due to, we don't have great information, and we need to let time pass so we have better data to present to the school committee. So my anticipation is that we'll present the recommended budget early in February, and that will be the budget that the school committee votes. So we'll not go through the presentation in its entirety. I'll just comment that again, we're a mission and vision driven organization, and everything we do is about the experience that our students have in the classroom and in our schools, the budget process. And again, I just highlighted the fact that typically in January, I'm presenting the superintendent's recommended budget. But this year, we added a new budget, which is the revised preliminary budget. And then we're marching toward the April town meeting, and I believe it is April 24th.
It's the last Monday.
Last Thursday.
Monday, is that gonna be Monday? Is that the?
Last week in April.
24th.
So I think it's important to just revisit the budget variables at this point in time. So we are in the third year contract with the Northboro Teachers Association. So we are in collective bargaining. This is an unknown in terms of the impact it will have on the FY24 budget. Currently, there are assumptions built into the revised preliminary budget. But we will not know this number until we have finalized negotiating with the Teachers Association. Also, we've spoken about the out-of-district special education tuition increase of 14%. So that is a significant amount of money added to the FY24 budget that we typically don't see in prior fiscal years. And we're also seeing a significant increase in out-of-district special education transportation costs. And then the impact of kind of the geopolitical climate, increased energy costs, the cost of supplies and materials due to inflation and costs of services are all impacting the FY24 budget and are considered budget variables at this point in time. So the budget that we are presenting this evening is a level services budget in most areas, with some incremental growth in certain curriculum line items. And basically, we're trying to protect the programming that we have, that students are experiencing in the 22, 23, and being able to continue those programs in this upcoming academic year. But really, the budget does not add additional programming at this point in time, just due to the fiscal climate that we're in at this point in time. So approved budget goals, so again, these are essential in the work that we do as we make decisions around what to include or not include in our budget. These budget goals are essential. And where are we in terms of the budget process? So in December, we presented the preliminary budget, and which represented 11.01% increase. So it was a $1.3 million increase over fiscal year 23. The operational budget subcommittee met prior to December break and provided us some direction. As a result, the leadership team looked at the budget very closely and came up with a little over $1.5 million in reductions to bring in this revised preliminary budget to 5.9%. And again, this preliminary budget includes many assumptions at this point in time. Again, comparing to where we were in fiscal year 23 budget process at the same time last year, as you can see, the preliminary budget came in at 4.4%. And we moved forward with a superintendent's recommended budget at 3.46%. So we're in a very different fiscal position than we were at this time last year. Just commenting on what is a 1% increase to the budget. So a 1% increase over fiscal year 23 is a little over $250,000. So this is a good kind of benchmark when we're gauging what impact line items have on the overall FY24 budget. So this table shows what the budget drivers are from the preliminary presented in December to the revised preliminary. So out-of-district collaborative tuitions, working closely with special education and student support services, we have a revised preliminary budget of $529,999 compared to the preliminary of a little over $1 million that was presented last month. That is looking very closely at out-of-district placements, looking at the use of circuit breaker and some other factors that are in play at this point in time. Transportation, special education, so student support services and the finance team looked very closely at projecting transportation costs. And as a result, was able to revise the preliminary budget decreased by about $100,000. Salary increases in COLAs, again, this is an unknown. So at this point in time, where our assumption is that the revised preliminary salary increases is going to be a little over $718,000. Electricity and heating has not changed since the preliminary, and substitutes, nurses, teachers, and leave of absences has not changed as well. So the revised preliminary budget drivers total a little over $1.6 million.
Could you just clarify that transportation number? And so the preliminary to the revised preliminary has gone down, has decreased? Okay. I think the version we had, the numbers were just flipped.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that these are the correct ones.
These are correct ones. So we went in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you.
It's decreasing that cost.
I also saw, I saw online looking at first, I was looking at mine saying, those numbers don't drive with what we have. So could we get copy of this machine?
This is hot off the press.
That's what I want.
So yes, we will send this off to you after the meetings.
Okay, thank you. Just shows that our budget is always evolving, and you're always working at it and racing everything. Thank you.
I think one of the challenges that we're facing this year is that the December meeting was very early in December, and the January meeting is very early in January. So with the December break, it's a moving target, trying to get this budget to the committee at this point in time. So budget offsets. So the preliminary budget for circuit breaker was a little over $900,000 for an offset. Our revised preliminary is $1.1 million. And this assumes that we're going to use some of the fiscal year 23 circuit breaker to fund next year's budget. The finance department has done a nice job looking at long-term trends and looking at when students will be aging out of programs, fiscal year 25, that is our projection. So based on those projections, we felt comfortable applying some of the circuit breaker reimbursement to this fiscal year 24 budget. Circuit breaker, special education, transportation offset, this is from the Student Opportunity Act, so that has not changed from the last budget presentation. And then potential retirements and leave of absences, so preliminary was $84,000, and this actually increased to $163,000. This just speaks to the fact that providing more time gives us better numbers about who might be not returning or might be taking leave of absence. This date is January 15th, so there are still additional information we could receive from faculty and staff about retirements or a leave of absence request for fiscal year 24. So from the preliminary to the revised, increased, offsets increased by about $300,000. So budget offsets.
And these are new offsets from the last budget that we had presented to you. So you can see that we had not taken these into consideration in December, but we have accounted for a revised offset in the salaries and increases in the COLAs of about $200,000. We're also looking at some unit A position reductions at about $140,000, utilizing our SR3 funds that we still have available at $150,000. And then we've also, Marie and I have been working closely on the Northboro budget, and we've looked at some of the special education lines, tuition, and then we've made some transportation adjustments based on some new information that we received, a student who is going to be graduating at the end of the year that we weren't sure. And so we've been able to achieve some savings of about $590,000. So these are additional offsets that have come in in the past month.
And as a result, the recommended FY24 budget, or the revised preliminary, is $28,268,510, which is a budget increase of 5.9%, or $1,575,557. So the town's target was about 3.5%. So we're about $600,000 over the town's target. However, at this point in time, if we go back and look at some of the budget drivers, you know, just out-of-district tuition, this is a 2% increase. Salary increases in COLAs is about a 3% increase. So if you look at the 5.9% increase, percent increase, it's primarily special education, COLAs, cost of living adjustments, salaries, and electricity costs. So it's not adding anything extravagant to our budget. So fiscal year 2024 impact of reductions. So I think this preliminary, revised preliminary has some assumptions. So the assumption is that we would reduce three unit A positions. So educator positions, we don't know what those positions are. And this is where time will help us if we find out about a retirement. But at some point, we'll have to get a sense of what these positions would be and what impact they would have to students. We've had some internal conversations, but we're not, at this point in time, I'm ready to share any detailed information with the committee, with the community. Utilization of FY24 circuit breaker funds. So if we use FY24 circuit breaker funds in FY24, typically, we use the second year of circuit breaker to have a known number when we do the budgeting for the upcoming fiscal year, which has been very helpful. This potentially could impact that process moving forward. We're going to have to amend SR3 to change what we said we would accomplish with SR3 funds. So we would do an amendment to the grant.
Is that the money through the state? Does that have to do that?
Every year, we have to do a progress update. So we would have to do a progress update and request an amendment. And then lastly, utilization of IDEA special education, special education grant for transportation. So we receive a federal grant that we would use to offset, increase transportation costs. So these are the impact of the budget reductions. And these are staffing requests that were requested by principals, but again, are not included in this revised preliminary budget. We were asked to prioritize these positions. So principals and directors worked closely together and came up with this prioritized list. The top three priorities for the team, the first is mathematic interventionists, one interventionist in each building, an educator support professional, 2.0 preschool students moving into CASA programs, and then a math educator to create a math coaching or math intervention model at Malickin School. I will share that the team chair was budgeted in FY23 budget, but because of the two additional educators we added, we held on that position and have not filled it. And that continues to be a priority, but did not make the top three. And as you can see, I know that a strong priority for the school committee was adding the elementary strings program. We've not given up hope on that. We have some ideas of how we can make that happen. We've been working with the music department. We received a proposal over December break. We're reviewing that proposal and also letting some other information kind of play out before we make any recommendation around whether that's feasible in this fiscal year 24 budget. So again, 15.28 requested full-time equivalent positions that never made it into the FY24 preliminary budget and still remain out of the budget at this point in time. So instructional materials, so we did move some instructional materials. This has not changed since the preliminary budget. Middle school science, middle school and elementary math curriculum, and then student staff devices. So this is SR3 funded. And also a shift from the preliminary budget, not included in the budget, the strings program, ELA K through 5 curriculum and professional development, ST math, K through 5, screening, and kindergarten curriculum. We did learn of a state grant where they would fund 50% of the ELA K through 5 curriculum. So Dr. Reinhorn and Megan Keltier are working on, looking at that grant very closely, and we're going to pursue that actively.
So they would do 50%, but we'd have to come up with the other 50%.
Yeah, so I think the other.
And which is not in the budget.
Which is not in the budget. We are also, Stephanie's working very closely with vendors and trying to get the. We are also, Stephanie's working very closely with vendors and trying to get the best price possible and talking about, you know, what is the actual cost? So we spoke about the 190 is really the ceiling, it's the most expensive it would be. And we're getting better data around what the actual cost is. And then with a 50% state matching, if we do get that grant, it is something that we feel could be feasible moving forward in this FY24, and it is a high priority for us. But these requests total $230,000. And we're fine tuning these numbers as well. And we are making every effort to try to include these in the recommended budget that will be presented in February. And revised preliminary, again, if you look at the historical appropriated budget percent increases, you know, we've been very conservative. We've worked very closely with the towns and brought in budgets within kind of the town confines. And this year, we're finding it extremely difficult to even bring in a 6% budget that doesn't have some reductions in staffing. So it's a very different economic climate than we've experienced over the past, I would say, 10 years, decade. And again, if you look at inflation, although it is trending in the right direction, a 6% budget doesn't even keep up with inflation at this point in time. So that is the revised preliminary budget. We have a lot more work to do, a lot more data to collect, and more questions to answer before we're ready to present our recommended budget to the school committee in February. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You know what I'm going to say? I guess my biggest concern is reduction of staff after we just talked about we're busting out the seams. That is not what I expected at all. I was very surprised to see that.
Yeah, and I will say that without, one of the challenges that we have is that we don't want to share some of the internal conversations that we're having because they impact people. And we're not, I'm not confident at this point, this is going to change without having, if we were to share scenarios with the school committee, it would, potentially could make people uneasy. So I guess my point is that there's a lot of thought that went into those, the potential positions. And our goal is always to try to minimize the impact of the experience students are having. So more information to share as we move forward.
What would our budget, this is kind of putting you on the spot, but what would it be if you didn't reduce those three?
I think it was 140, is that, wasn't there a line item that said it was 140?
It was about $70,000 for each position.
It's going to be 643 for the 140. 643, yeah, 6.43, sorry.
6.43%.
And then there was another.
Six tenths of a percent, right? 5.9, and it would be 6.4.
And then, and then there was, so there was another position in another line, so that would actually bring it up to 6.88, so a percentage point.
That makes sense.
You wouldn't recommend that budget?
I mean, we don't have enough information to make a recommended budget at this point in time. I will share that getting to 5.9% was not easy.
So I was going to make a joke. It's not the time to make jokes. I know that Becky can maybe sleep because of our current budget, but you're probably not sleeping over this budget, for sure. So I know that you're probably still not sleeping. So a few sort of clarifying questions. So the use of that Circuit Breaker money, can I just clarify? So typically, that seems like it wouldn't be a smart financial decision. But the reason why we're saying it could be done is because of a decrease in special ed costs for our next fiscal year. Is that correct? And that's someone who's graduating, so we will not be having those, we will not need funds like in future years potentially. Does that make sense?
In FY25, and Marie, feel free to jump in, but we have a number of students who are either aging out or graduating. And so we've taken those into consideration when we've looked at forecasting ahead for FY25.
Okay, because my worry would be, you know, we use Circuit Breaker now. And then what sort of pattern do we get into? And do we sort of get stuck? So, but it sounds like with the trends, we would be able to sort of get out of that pattern of using the Circuit Breaker money for that reason?
The hope would be that, yes, yeah.
So I'll just comment too that I would say that the amount of Circuit Breaker that we'd be applying to the FY24 budget, I would characterize as conservative. So we are not, it's a fraction of Circuit Breaker, not, it's not half, it's not three quarters, so it's a measured approach.
So sort of along the same lines, using the SR3 money, I know that we have a practice of not using one-time funds for operational budget expenses typically. The list that was presented, are those all like one-time costs that we will just need to incur on our operational budget for next year?
Yeah, so with SR3 and grant funds that we receive, we purchase materials and supplies versus adding positions. So all of these items fall within what we typically would use grant funding for. And does not create a structural deficit for us.
What is that you're allocating from?
So we had.
I mean, from like the SR, so like, you know how you said you, I wanted to go one way, but now I have to go another.
For example, we had money for Red Cat audio systems for our classrooms. So that is something that we feel like these are more of a priority than the Red Cat audio systems as an example.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Next, John.
And then aside that you're showing right now, the bottom one, student and staff devices. Is this replenishing technology due to where, due to have updates have to be onto it? And even just increased enrollment? I mean, we've never really, I don't think, had extra laptops sitting around. So if we talk about we're getting new students every month, those are devices that students need to have.
Correct. This aligns with our staff and device replacement, and student device replacement plan. So this replaces all the devices that are aging out. And we need to replace those devices because they no longer work with, for example, next generation MCAS testing. So we have no choice but to stay current with our student staff devices and stay current with our plan.
Yeah, I didn't realize, John, when I, I had to buy one for PTO Raffle Drift, a plan book. And I didn't realize that they literally have expiration dates in them, that after a certain date, you can't even update the software on the phones.
It's like phones.
It's like, it's that worst, I mean, hello, I have a seven, I mean, yes, I'm. Well, my phone stopped updating because I thought it mattered. But it's, but you can't, if you, they won't work after a certain date. And they're not that long of.
It's like three, four years, right? Three or four years?
A lot of them are max, like, you're lucky if you find number five, you know, so.
And that is something that is really needed because the MCAS test that comes in the springtime is done via the technology. So we don't even have a choice. And it isn't anything, I hate to say fluff, because people would say, well, what's the fluff, you know? And there isn't. And just going on to what Erin had said, when I look at the staffing requests that are not in the budget, I don't see any that are, oh, this would be our wish list. It isn't a wish list, it's a need list that we need in that staffing, especially as we're coming off the pandemic. You know, we're coming to the point now where you hear about what all the schools and MCAS scores and that, is that some kids lost a whole year. And I'm concerned about the elementary grade levels when they, some of the kids didn't learn their multiplication tables at the end of third grade, and they were pushed on to fourth grade. All of these, and some, I would say some of them, I want to say majority, are a result of pandemic. The results of that, of coming down, of, you know, having remote learning and not having a continual whole year in school. And, you know, doing that is, you know, you have your math tutors, you have your reading tutors. You even have your team chair, which I know is a very important part of our special ed program to have. So, you know, it's a shame that we are in the position we are at. And I just applaud the administration and the principals and the teachers for still working extra hard that they are doing to get these kids up without the need list of what we need in our classrooms. So I don't know how we, as a committee, go ahead and sooner than later, do we meet with John? Do we try to educate people on what our needs are and what we're facing?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the purpose of the Financial Trend Monitoring meeting is really to provide kind of a larger context there is, regardless of whether we want to bring a 25% budget forward or not, there's a fixed amount, a fixed pool of money. I think a 6% budget is pushing that envelope. I mean, these requests alone represent a 4% increase on to the 5.9.
And I know we won't get those positions. I know we cannot go up to a 10% budget. I know that's not going to happen, but I think it's a matter of.
What is the, what is the number one priority of, I mean, generally, you know the point about the COVID and the step back of the kids, and I mean, math interventions, I think that's like the news. I'd love to see if we could somehow add that, like, if we have the 5.9, if we added that on top of the 5.9, what would that, what's, what is that 30,000, what is that percentage size?
Percent and a half, percent and.
Yeah, about a percent and a half.
266 is 1%. Yeah, I mean, we can.
But you're also taking care of staff alike.
Well, that's.
Right, right. So now you're talking about keeping seven.
I see that. I mean, I, I'm, and again, the reduction of staff, I'm seeing it as it could be potential of like a retirement, and now we're getting something, so it's like, it's a reduction in the staff versus like.
Those are already factored in. The three positions would be elimination of three positions. One of the strategies we could take is, again, this is a revised preliminary. We still need more time to get a better dataset. Is we could start with trying to restore the three positions, start there. And then the first priority, once we get to that point, is adding the interventionists.
I just see that.
Instead of.
Yeah, maybe start, I just see something. Our kids are going to keep sliding if we don't have things. I mean, we have our reading, it seems like our reading has been built up. We've been working on that for the past few years. It seems like math is, you know, we need to be pushing the math up as well. I know we're working on the new math software, things like that, but curriculum for. My thing is that the longer we keep putting things off, it's never going to get easier. It's never going to, and I feel like, like, look, it's down on like the list for the team chair, which we approved last year. We had it in our budget. We were all excited. We got, we're doing, and now all of a sudden, it's not even, we haven't even got what we wanted and needed.
Yeah, I think though, I would also argue that, yes, I agree with you, but at the same time, the challenge with enrollment is we can't budget, it's hard to budget what-if scenarios. We can't add two positions just in case enrollment increases by whatever. So we have to, we have to build a budget on the best data we have at the time we're building the budget. And then react to what comes at us, and that is conversations with the town. That, hey, we can't control enrollment. We presented a fiscally responsible budget, but we increased enrollment by 50 students. Therefore, we need additional funding. I think, you know, I think in Westboro, I think there was an article in the Community Advocate that they had to go to the town and ask for a million dollars as a result of special education. So we're not the only district that's experiencing increased costs in special education. If we took special education increased cost out of the equation, we would be having the conversation of what other programs could we add? However, we have a responsibility to all students, including special ed students. And some of the students require programming that is really expensive, but that's what they require at this point in time.
So a couple of things I just wanted to go back to. So first of all, you know that I am a strong supporter of the strings program being reinstated in the town of Northborough. I think that the music study group did a great job, you know, collecting data and surveys and sort of figuring out the needs and desires of our community. Additionally, sitting here and hearing that there could be a potential reduction of positions that currently exist in our town, in our district, you know, it feels a little bit silly to say, oh, you know, we want this strings program too, right? Because sometimes it's hard to have it all. So if there are creative solutions to finding funds, like those, the grant funding for certain things, I think that that could be an avenue. I know you're working maybe behind the scenes a little bit. I'm still an advocate for music and for the strings program. But again, I think sometimes reality hits of, you know, here's what we're faced with. I do agree that the reduction of positions is not something that I like and would support unless it was the only option to get our budget passed, which brings me to, you know, passing a budget. So we have a few more obstacles to go. Obviously, we need to pass a budget. And then we need to go through the town's process. So I think what I'm worried about is even looking at the 5.9 and then hearing what we're saying tonight about even maybe wanting a little bit more, is where do we think that town's approval level is in terms of getting approval from appropriations, finance, and then town meeting? And what are next steps if it, A, doesn't pass? Financial implications for the taxpayers as well? And these are big, big questions that I think we haven't really had to face the last few years that I think are important questions to answer. I don't mean to just throw all these questions at you tonight, but I think all that information will be so helpful because we have a huge decision ahead of us in February. So that information is going to be super helpful if you can try to gather that.
Yeah, I think, I think those are great points, and it is a budget process. So I think we are in, on the journey right now. So, you know, we do have to present to the town boards and committees and make sure they have good information. We are one member, one department, in many departments. We are also the largest budget, so, you know, we have to, we have to look at the larger context of what the town looks like fiscally. I think we got a small picture in, with the Financial Trend Monitoring presentation. And I think in the next four to six weeks, we'll have better data. We'll have opportunities to collaborate and partner with the town boards and committees. And then at some point, the committee will have to make a decision that this is an educationally sound budget that we need to move forward with. That's your job, it's my job, even if it is outside the constraints of what, what is allocated. But yes, I will get you to.
Yeah.
But yes, I will get you the process. We'll talk about process and what that looks like and how do we move forward.
I just wouldn't want to go to town meeting, have our budget not pass, go back to the drawing board. I really want to come out with a strong budget that is educationally sound, hopefully fiscally responsible as much as we can be.
I don't, I don't think, I mean, history, I don't think we're... I think we're going to, whatever we present, we'll get it to be able to pass and we'll have the other committees supporting us because of the story we need to tell them. And we need to live out the facts and show them, like, this is historically where we've been. This is where we want to go. I mean, part of it that you want people to come and move into our community. We want families and families to move in. We want them to move into our school districts where we need to be a thriving school district. We need to, you know, be able to support the families.
I mean, part of the story too is that, you know, in FY '21, you know, we moved forward a 1% budget because of the context and the circumstance. So when you move forward a 1% budget, it compounds over a year. You know, you're not building upon a 3% budget or a 4% budget. You know, the same with fiscal year '22. So I think part of the story is that historically, we've, we've been able to bring in budgets that are educationally sound and fiscally responsible. And we are too this year, just potentially not within...
Not as...
Yeah, I think that's a really important part of the story. Those three years that we're under that, you know, 3% kind of target has a ripple effect and that's where we are now.
And I think anytime...
And I will also just comment that inflation, as much it is, you know, we've never had inflation impact the prior five-year fiscal budgets. The way, just $135,000 in increased electricity costs. That's, that's a half a percent.
And that's a big part of the story too, is that this budget does not include anything new.
Nothing. And when you have that 1%, one year, you have that 1%, it takes a long time to overcome it. It's like, in, historically, when we've had cuts in, in staff, especially at the high school, is it's taken a long time to get those back in and restored. I don't think the cuts that we had, we ever really stored 100% of those cuts because it takes so much.
You know, I would also say that in FY, in fiscal year '23, in that appropriated budget, I think there were incremental growth. We added an instructional technology specialist. But that was, that was really putting back in place what we had.
To take out.
So we were, we were starting to make incremental growth. I think that my recommendation to the committee and the work that we're trying to do is to move forward a level services budget with a few areas where we're moving the needle. We're adding some programming for students.
And I applaud Stephanie and her staff members helping you doing that grant, no matter what money it is. I know grant writing is not an easy process, but anything that you can do is just so helpful. So thank you for taking that initiative. And I'm sure, kudos to you also because you've also done that.
She does a great job at covering it.
I'm a great chaser. A story chaser.
So my recommendation for next steps is that I think that we should have a school, a working school committee session, so a meeting, or just working on the budget and helping us as a leadership team, giving us some more direction. This is a unique budget year and we all need to be on the same page.
I'd suggest if we could do it after the 15th, so we have a few more...
Ideally after the 26th.
I was going to say, yeah, maybe early February, but is that going to push the February meeting then? How does that...
In the February meeting.
It's early too, I think.
It's the first.
It's literally on the first.
Yeah, I think, I think that's too late.
Is that a meeting that would be open to the community? Like, would that be an open session?
Yeah, I mean, any meeting is open to the community. It's just not necessarily...
Is that a great thing to put out there so that people can really come and hear what we're doing with?
I mean, all meetings, people are welcome to come to.
Well, I meant like, is it going to be in person or virtual?
It'd be in person. I mean, in my mind, this is how it looks. It'd be in person. It'd be one, one topic on the agenda. It wouldn't be audience sharing. It would be a time for us to work through some of the decisions that we need to make. So anyone could, could listen in and, but really, my thinking is it would be an opportunity for the committee to do its budget work. It'd be a business meeting. I think the recommended budget, we could, we could share some of the backstory around how did we, how did we get to this budget? What's the process? And then obviously, there is a public hearing for the budget as we move forward in the process. But just this conversation is helpful. We have some, some work, we have some direction and some work to do just from this conversation.
All righty. School committee, um, little reports. I'll start at the end of today. Anything?
Nothing.
Joel?
Yes, I have one. It was a meeting that I attended for the NSPAC officers as an alternate for Kelly and for Bryce. And just so Kelly, for your information, the next meeting is going to be January the 19th. That's a virtual meeting. And following that is February 16th, and that's an in-person meeting. I'd also like to mention that at the December 16th meeting, our superintendent Greg Martin was in attendance and so was Marie Allen, our director of special ed. So Marie, if I make my report and I say something, long or short, just go like this. Okay, so it was a great meeting, great attendance. Some of the things that they came up with were that they have their work and they're relating it to the strategic plan. So anytime I hears an organization or a department or a group that's working together and working with a strategic plan, I like to have that happen because I think many times that strategic plan, sometimes ours doesn't, and I think, but sometimes it just, it's done and it's put away and put on a shelf. But ours is a very livable, up-to-date program. They also talked, there was items requested by the NSPAC officers, and one was the MCAS scores. And I saw Stephanie that it, one of the upcoming agenda items that we have is going to be on MCAS presentation. So Kelly, maybe the next meeting, you can give them an update of when the MCAS is going to be given. They, they also talked about a new IEP format that's coming out from DESI. So they talked about that. And they also talked about peer acceptance and social inclusion training. So Marie brought them up to date. It was nice to hear their questions. It's the first time I attended one of these meetings. And it was nice to see that their questions and the dialogue that was going back and forth between Greg and Marie and lighten them on the information that you had and answered their questions. So I really appreciated that. They also talked about, you talked about the inclusion audit that is in place. It's in the practices around inclusion services and their practices. And everyone agreed that it was a meaningful experience to go through. So it's amazing to hear that when somebody goes through an audit, everybody goes, uh. But you thought that it was a very meaningful experience to go through. And the other thing they wanted to know was the UDL explores. They wanted the information on initiatives, timelines, and what that was going to be going forward. So that's one of the curriculum initiatives that you were talking about, Greg, the UDL. So it was a great meeting and I was glad to serve as an alternate to be there. So thank you very much.
Health and Wellness Committee, we didn't meet in December, but we'll be meeting in January and Planning Wellness Week for 2023, and then presenting to the school committee in March.
Okay, thank you. And then for me at this time, there is upcoming meetings on the calendar for other committees.
So the Coalition for Equity is meeting a week from this Thursday. And also, the coalition formed a calendar, a calendaring advisory group. So that group will be meeting virtually on Tuesday at 4 o'clock to discuss the 23, 24 student calendar.
And I am going to be present for that. So I'll be able to represent the school committee.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And it was going to be in person. Now it's virtual, right?
Virtual.
Okay.
Oh, okay. The 10th is virtual. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and then the High School Configuration will be the 24th.
Yep.
In person. One thing about NSPAC though, I did go to their holiday thing and they hired a new member. And it's Jo, Joanne.
Jo, what's Joanne? Who's the new member of NSPAC?
I was like looking up. I was like, I know it's Joanne. But I'm drawing a blank. I'm here asking. So, I was, Joanne. Anyways, one more time. When it, when it comes to me, which I won't, well, I won't answer. Educational policy. Do we have, by this time, do we have a schedule?
January 30th, there's a joint policy subcommittee meeting. So I'm in the process of finalizing my monthly report to the committee, so that will be outlined in the report.
Okay, so, hold it.
January 30th, yes.
Yeah, so, but, but, just to be kind of what I'm looking, so every policy in our whole handbook, everybody looks at the bottom of, it says, established, created, reviewed. And I remember like a few years ago seeing like a spreadsheet that Cheryl had of all the policies and the years they were established and the years that they were reviewed and everything like all that. So that's the...
Yes.
That's the calendar that I think would be helpful to bring up and see, just knowing that there's a few policies that we've talked about recently that people are like, why is this policy wise? It hasn't, it's like, well, there's a timeline, there's a timeframe, so.
So I did, Cheryl and I did talk and what we are going to do is, we do have a notes column we're going to hide. And we're going to publish that to our school committee policy page.
Okay.
So for those people who are interested in looking.
Who are curious when something's going to be up there.
Perfect. Joel Gilmore.
Thank you.
My watch told me.
Thank you. That's it. All right. So that's the policies, our distribution of new policies at this time, and personal distribution of personal report.
So in your packet is the personal report as of January 4th, 2023. And we had some success appointing ESPs. And we did have one resignation, retirement, Linda Budenhagen, who is an ESP, Speech and Language Pathology Assistant at Lincoln Street School. And she'll be retiring at the end of the year. So we'll have an opportunity to celebrate and honor all retirees as the end of the year draws near.
Communications.
So in your packet is a letter from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding a determination under Part B that is required for our support services department as a result of IDEA. And the finding was that we met all requirements in the performance plan. So there is no corrective action that we need to take at this point in time. So it was good news.
It's good news.
And next month, also, Marie will be speaking about the tiered focus monitoring that we will be beginning this year, preparing for and starting next year. So she will provide an update on that as well. I know that was another question that NSPAC had around auditing of student support services.
So we have action on minutes. We have a special meeting, open meeting of December 1st. We have an open meeting from December 7th. And then we've got two separate executive sessions. One is a special meeting, executive session, and then one was executive session. Do we have any motions? We can do the talk to and then the bottom two.
And the executive session minutes.
They're retained.
Retained. I'd like to make a motion.
Question.
I'm going to do the motion for number one and number two, since they're open meeting minutes. I move to accept the special open meeting minutes of December 1st, 2022, and the minutes from the open meeting of December 7th, 2022.
Second. Motion by Joan, second by Erin. Any discussion? No? Are there further? More than this? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept and retain the minutes from the special meeting of December 1st, 2022, and the executive session minutes of December 7th, 2022.
Second. My motion by Joan, second by Erin. Any discussion? No discussion? No further? More than this? Okay. No, our future agenda items. No business.
So the only item that I could see is multilingual honor data presentation from Mrs. Webb? Been a busy month.
Yeah. Anything, anything else? Okay. Probate and barrels are happening on the line. I just signed some to that one.
Just need one more signature.
Let me guess. Audience sharing? Seeing that, all right.
I have a request through audience sharing. Greg, seeing that we had the recommended budget and that you'd be doing a more in-depth detail of it, I think it would be helpful at that time is if maybe through your office, extend to the Board of Selectment, Mitch Cohen, and the chairman, and make a special invitation if he would like to attend, and the other members. I think it would be very helpful for them to be here and then, you know, if they can ask any questions as we get through, through the chair, if she wanted to, you know, wait until the end or if they had any questions they could ask at the end of the presentation. But I think if they know, I think, I think we have to get, tell them how important this is to us.
I almost wonder too if, when we make the agenda, if we know they're going to be in, or we move it up in the the, the agenda. So do you want to like start right off, you know? So it's right in the beginning and, so we can make a note of that to reorder the, whether it's the, want to be the February or March? I guess we have February.
And also, if making, you know, the decision between you and Kelly is also see if the other financial boards want to be in attendance. Just give the information.
I think we could put the information out there, let them know that we will be discussing our budget first.
Right.
For the evening. That's good idea, Joan. Thank you. All right, so we will have more of our new business, more of our business to come before tonight. I have a motion to adjourn to executive session. We will not be returning to open meeting.
So do you want me to move that? So I'm move to, head to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Northborough Teachers Association, Unit A, due to the chair's determination. bargaining with Northborough Teachers Association, Unit A, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with no intent to return to open meeting.
Second.
Motion by Ellen, second by Joan. We'll call, well, Ellen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
myself, Kelly, yes. So at 8:05, we will adjourn into executive session. Thank you so much.